Everybody wants to do.
Yeah.
Maybe.
I'm sorry. And we love that.
If you're going somewhere and sales price.
I don't know.
Who?
Please.
Ready to start another vacation.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're not. You want me to? Okay. I can.
Tomorrow. I've always worked hard for my vacation to get the rest of the hill and get back from the vacation.
No, that's nice. I'm glad to get on Saturday. I'm glad to get on Saturday. I've been gone for a week. I'm telling you, I was glad to get home. I didn't, I didn't, I just get tired, tired, tired. Mason tried to talk me into staying a whole nother day because I've been going to the Braves game in Tampa. I'm like, I just don't think anyone just said, so I've got to get in my hotel on the way home. I was heading on Saturday evening. He wanted me away until seven o'clock at the game.
They're prepared to get home.
Like it's.
Yeah.
I'm working.
Thank goodness it did.
My office has got boxes sitting all around. I'm afraid to tape any of them because I keep having to go back in them for something.
I'll, I'll do it when. The Williams.
Yeah.
Well, yeah. I just got turned by. Very. You know. I'm feeling what's done. That's one of them.
We grabbed a dollar.
That's okay.
You bill out.
I understand.
We got six dollars. Very specific.
God, that's.
Man, I was. See me look at the interest that's on the back. The back side of the room. She said, what is sad with? So. Right, okay. And then that's John just getting out. Yes, Brandon.
No, it doesn't. I don't think people turn up. The kindergarten. Or now it's.
No, no, no.
You don't hear. Yeah. Lost elephant. You can't. What's your? They don't, yeah.
Watch the first thing.
There's some.
I don't know. Just came. It was like. Like. His wife.
You'll take these Melissa now come here tonight.
Thank you. I try to come to her. She's, I give them to her. We're giving Melissa.
Plenty of Melissa. We're here.
I'm not sure. I can take them. I can give them to her tomorrow. Yeah.
Okay. Yes. I just. She would get me.
And the guy had it laid out.
This is the fastest. I don't remember where she's going to go.
It's fully already.
Letting her.
Ignore them.
That's true. Bob is. Y'all sure that was almost like that?
Yeah, we were in Tampa. Forty miles, fifty miles past Tampa. We went down. My son's family.
Diane, shake your head.
They got a house.
Diane just came back to him. Shake your head. So maybe she's back.
Stayed with him for a weekend. And it was always easy. It's like, it was just way too much, too way too easy. Way too. I did play golf three times. And you know, we beat each other today. We ran a boat today without an ocean. So it was never as dull.
You ready to come home?
I was ready to come home. I was ready to come home. It's good that we did come home. Because my, my youngest must all. It's a, it's a big tall, real thin body. I think of his people that are. I'm like, I never heard of it till yesterday. Like they were taking the best. First surgery last night. It's like ten thousand dollars. And they performed surgery on him last night. And um. If we'd have stayed in there tonight, he might have died. Especially because they got a very small, real thin waist. Um, so when they get active, they get six months return. So that going in, we, we turn it back and everything with all.
Then wherever I sit in the meeting.
They like it though. I like it. About ten thousand dollars.
It's just a little better. So you know. My wife.
Oh, no, I know. A bunch of people would.
They hurt dogs. You're gonna do.
They didn't hesitate. They didn't hesitate. Always something.
Thanks, Melissa.
So I do need to get with you. Always. Proper gym. Tomorrow. Go fun. Even away. I'm saying. You got. That go public.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, yeah. So I, I live there. I read.
Maybe I. Is that right? Yeah. She waits to hear from somebody else. You know.
I wish she met my. I don't know why she, unless she reached out to him, why would they respond?
You see what's. Raise down. They're the board to their. Special body. Please. Yeah, but she's got a spirit. I don't know. It's not. Someone thought she. Always.
Good evening. Welcome to Oconee County Board of Commissioners meeting. Today is July the eleventh, twenty twenty-three. If you're joining us virtually to comment during the public comment portions of the meeting, please use the raise hand feature in Zoom. After moment of silence, we're going to ask Chuck Horton to lead us in the pledge. Please stand. Thank you.
I'm glad you're here. I mean, I'd say so. You can. One. On your god. It is.
Yeah, first time a business will be to approve the agenda.
Make a motion to approve the agenda submitted. Second.
Yeah, a motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. Next time, is any statements or remarks from citizens? This is for anything not on the agenda tonight.
How are y'all doing? My name is Grady Recker. I live in Watkinsville. I have three kids, one on the way and a wife. My wife attends the library quite often here in Watkinsville. And I think we were both. Pretty upset about. The agenda that seems to be pushed at a library. I'm not looking to silence any voices. I understand the importance of altering opinions on certain matters. But it seemed like this past month at the library. You couldn't walk in without being hit in the side of the face with all sorts of books. For kids that just didn't seem very age appropriate. With my oldest being five, that was very concerning to me. I know there was a meeting yesterday at the library and I was there. Unfortunately, I wasn't able to speak because there was quite a few people there. I don't know. John, do you, did you lead that by chance?
No, there's a separate library board that was there meeting.
I was actually impressed with the person who led it. I thought that the crowd was pretty. Pretty rowdy. And I thought the, the person who led it did a really good job to try to kind of keep things balanced. But. Since I didn't have the opportunity to say something there, I wanted to come here because I understand the library is moving to Wire Park. That's a big investment. So I think. Seems like the board here would have a lot of influence of what goes on at the library and what. What we're showing the kids at certain ages. Maybe having some type of standard or what's age appropriate. For. The library to have for kids and, and certain kids sections. Also, just. You know, the, the promotion of a certain agenda seemed, seemed very obvious from the staff. And I know a handful of moms, including my wife, that adjust the staff. And they're very kind, but didn't seem to necessarily change anything. And I, I kind of come here to speak on behalf of them because. Right now is six o'clock. It's bedtime. It's the witching hour for all those moms who are taking care of those kids and they can't be here right now. So I'm kind of standing in their place, but. I wanted to come and address the board as a concerned citizen, a concerned dad. Of our, you know, younger generation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Julie Mock and I live in Watkinsville. And I was there last night as well. So I just want to. Second to everything that he said about what's going on at the library. And I made a comment yesterday about. When I spoke about the Marxist takeover. Of the American Library Association and I got shouted down and laughed and abused over that. However. I wanted to let you all know, we are also members of the American Library Association. But I do want to let you know that the state of Montana, just this afternoon, voted to disassociate. With the American Library Association because the newly elected president is an avowed Marxist. And this is what they said in their resolution. They said, dear Executive Board of Directors. The purpose of this letter is to announce the Montana State Library's immediate separation. From the American Library Association, our oath of office and resulting duty to the Constitution forbids association. With an organization led by a Marxist. And that was by the. Montana State Library Commission. So I just think that we need to reevaluate our membership and relationship with the Athens Regional Library Association. There's some very nefarious things going on there. A lot of people don't want to see it. But I can show it to you. I'm happy to sit down and have lunch with anybody and explain to you what's going on and where it's coming from. But it's here. And I believe that Montana is going to be the first of many states to pull out. And I hope Georgia eventually does too. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone version?
Yes.
Yes, sir. Mr. Ball.
I'm Charles Ball. Live at sixty-two ninety-two Greensboro Highway. I don't want to rework all that was said last night. I was there last night. Heard all of it. You probably have already read part of what it said, but. I want to thank you, John Daniel, for. Speaking up at that. Public hearing. And indicating that somebody needed to take a look at the community standards. And I appreciate you doing that. And I. It takes, in a controversial issue like this, it takes some intestinal fortitude. Where somebody in your position to do that. And I appreciate it. Thank you.
Anyone else? Any statements or remarks from commissioners? So on, on the library, the Board of Commissioners does provide funding for the library, but we're not involved in the day-to-day operations of the library with programming or book selection. That's all done at the regional level. Or at the local library level. In, in talking with the. I believe the library board, I don't have the final, I didn't go to the meeting, so I don't know, but. One of their things was to, to review the programming and, and make recommendations back to the library staff on. What they thought was appropriate. Programming. So hopefully that'll help alleviate some concerns that are out there. Also want to announce the County McCounty Administrative Building is, will be located, which is located at seventy-six thirty-five Macon Highway. We open to the public on Monday, July twenty-four, starting at eight AM. So all the offices that are currently with the county will be closed on February, excuse me, on Friday, July twenty-first. For the final move. So right now furniture is being installed. We're boxing everything up, throwing a bunch of stuff away and. Will be moving on the twenty-first. We'll be the final moving day. So. All the offices moving are the Board of. Board of Commissioners Office, County Clerk, Elections, Emergency Management. Emergency Management, Fire Mental Health, Facilities. Finance, Fire Rescue. Our GIS system, Human Resources, Information Technology, Planning and Code Enforcement, Property Appraisal, Public Works. Keep Oconee County Beautiful, the Tax Commissioner and Water Resources. The only thing that will be remaining in the courthouse or court-related operations, probate court, Superior Court, Juvenile Court. As well as magistrate court along with the clerk of courts office. All the office number, telephone numbers and email addresses will remain the same. Also, on the twenty-fifth, before our next meeting. Will be a ribbon cutting. When you come in and participate in the ribbon cutting and get a tour of the building, that would be on July the twenty-fifth at four thirty. And then you're welcome to stay for another exciting meeting and the Board of Commissioners at six o'clock. So this will be our last meeting in this building. So our next one will be at the new location. We will continue to live stream our. Meetings at the new building. However, participation will be in person only after we make the move. Missing. Our next item is to approve, approve the minutes from our regular meeting on June the sixth, town hall meeting on June fifteenth, as well as our agenda setting meeting on June twenty-seventh.
Make a motion to approve this submitted.
Second.
Motion second to approve, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. Now we're going to move into our hearing and actions on zoning matters. The reason opposition will be presented by the staff with no time limit. The applicant knows signing up to speak for the petition shall be allowed a total of twenty minutes. Less the applicant's reserve time before rebuttal. Those signs to speak up against petitions shall also be allowed a total of twenty minutes. After that time is up, we will close the public comments. And the Board of Commissioners will have an opportunity to ask questions as they see appropriate. And then the board shall make it to take action as set out in the Unified Development Code. When you are making comments, the comments are made to the Board of Commissioners only. And we'd like to refrain from any comments and jeering and, and shouting down at anybody who's speaking for or against. Have respect for everybody's. Time when they're allowed to speak. So with that, we'll move into our first zoning matter, which is a rezon application P twenty-three dash zero zero nine zero. Kelly Barwick and Ken Hill Jacobs Properties LLP. So rezoning from AR to B two is six point two five, two eight five acres at seventy-seven sixty Macon Highway. There's also a special use P twenty-two three dash zero zero eight nine for the same property. So with that guy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Again, this is rezoned P twenty-three zero zero nine zero and special use P twenty-three zero zero eight nine. Kelly Barwick, Ken Hill and Jacob Properties LLP owner. This is located at four forty-one and North Main. This is the portion of B zero six zero two nine and a portion of B zero six zero two nine eight. It's currently zoned AR. Slightly larger zoomed out version of zoning map showing AR Civic Center character area. And again, the request is to rezone from AR to B two for proposed gas station convenience store development. With a special use request for diesel truck refueling bays along four forty-one. This is the concept plan that was submitted with the application packet. Showing the entrance at the signal, existing signal. Truck fueling base in the back, standard fueling base in the front. These are the representative photos presented with the application. And staff recommends conditional approval with our three standard conditions. Number four. Ingress, egress, access easements shall be provided from the right of way of four forty-one along and including the entrance drive to the remaining portions of parcel B zero six zero two nine A. And B zero six zero two nine to provide for future development access to the signal. Inter parcel access dovetails to the north and to the west along the entrance drive shall be shown on the preliminary plat and site development plans. Planning Commission recommended approval with staff recommendations. Thank you.
Now we're here from the applicant of the owner of the applicant or the owner, agent of the owner.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Commissioners. I'm Eric Everhart. I'm an attorney with Everhart and Hale. I'm a resident of Oconee County. I'm here representing a couple of different groups. First of all, I represent the property owners who have assigned those rights to, to my primary client. My primary client is Quick Trip Corporation. It is the plan of Quick Trip to build a convenience store at this site location. As indicated, this is the west side of the four forty-one fifteen spur at traffic light. Essentially across from what you were just talking about, the new government complex. The project comes to you, as you know, as a joint rezone and special use request. There are two different properties that are involved. As you've been told. One of those properties, we were able to, to get an option for a portion of it. We would be, and when I say we, I'm saying Quick Trip or QT. We would be purchasing one point nine six five acres on the southwest side of the light. And then on the northwest side of that light, we would be purchasing the entire twenty-two acres. The purchase of, of the two portions was because of the configuration of that spur. We couldn't really do in egress, ingress. Without some contribution from the northwest side of, of, of that tract. And I think I said that backwards. It's actually one point nine six on the, on the northwest side and then the twenty-two acres on the southwest side. As far as the twenty-two acres, it was conditional with the owner of that property that we purchased all or nothing. They weren't going to split it. I think you guys have seen that. In other areas of the county, the, the one that sort of comes to mind is, is in the area of Hog Mountain Road and Highway seventy-eight. I think there was a similar situation. Where, where it was necessary to purchase the entire, entire track. For, for a convenience store or some similar type of, of, of business at that location. In our instance. We're going, going to use approximately four point. Three acres of the twenty-two acres. From, for what we are developing. That's what we come today. Asking for you to, to approve both from a rezone standpoint as well as a special use standpoint is that six point two plus acre. Area, the remainder of, of the track would, would stay at this time, A, A R would have to come back to you guys at a later time. If it were to, to change or, or need to change from a zoning standpoint. Can't speak to that right now. There are no plans for, for anything additional anytime soon. For the remainder of that track. So it would stay, it would stay as it is. For, for the moment. Currently, as I just mentioned, these tracks are zoned AR. We are making the request for B two zoning. The special use request comes under the Unified Code Section two oh five ten E to permit three bays for commercial vehicle diesel fueling. Both the Planning Commission and the Planning Department have recommended approval of the project, the zoning and, and the special uses. With, with conditions that are behind you. Which QT is more than happy to, to go along with. So, so we're in agreement. On anything that's being asked of us from, from planning. And the Planning Commission, if you were to, to approve us. Currently, G dot controls the light. That services that location. We, we will have to do what they want as far as, far as egress and ingress. At the moment, they will only agree for us to have ingress and egress at the light. We have presented to them and discussed with them the idea of having an additional egress that would serve, serve our location. At the moment, G dot is, is limiting it to, to just coming in and out at the light. Of course, as you know, we'll have to do what they, they say as far as that's concerned. At the Planning Commission, there, there were a few residents that, that live slightly less than half a mile away that presented some questions. And QT would like to just meet all of that head on. First, Oconee County permits commercial vehicle fueling only as a special use. Unified Code Section covering commercial fueling incorporates any and every form, including truck stops. But. This is not a truck stop. This is not truck stop property. It will not be developed in that way. That's not what's happening here. There will be no location here for truck parking. It just won't be permitted and there won't be space for it. We will have a kitchen that will serve. Ordered for, served to order food. There will be no indoor seating. There will be no indoor tables. There are no showers or any other amenities that are associated with the travel center. In fact, the space that is being developed, the building that's being placed on this track. Is about two thousand square feet smaller than what is utilized for, for a travel center that QT. Would, would develop. This is not a travel center location. It just unfortunate from, from our perspective that, that it. In some forms, it has been described in that way. Because it's just not what's happening here. This is purely to, to allow for refueling bays for commercial vehicles. It will not be unsightly either. And let's talk through that a little bit. The commercial bays are behind the building. They will be blocked from you. By the building itself. So this is not a situation where, where you're riding up and down four forty-one. And it's just a blight to, to what you're looking at unless. You pull in or you choose to, to look behind the building. That's, so we've, we've taken, we've taken special precautions in the planning to make sure. That you can't just view this in a way that, that folks, folks would be, be unhappy with. And you've seen the, the plan for this particular location. It's been presented to you. You've seen the other locations here. Here in the county. Quick Trip. Builds a good product and they stand behind it. Now. One of the bigger, bigger things that has come up and it needs to be addressed and it's fair to address this is. Is the suggestion that this particular development is going to cause some type of, of additional truck traffic through Watkinsville. Folks, that's just not really, really the case. QT doesn't choose its properties in a way that. They're designed to detour people off their path as a destination. This site wasn't chosen in that way either. This site was chosen to serve this county for people that are traveling along four forty-one. And are traveling to that, that light and may be going any direction at that light. That's what it's for. This is not going to create more trucks driving, driving through Watkinsville. It just doesn't make sense really. If you, if you think about it from a common sense standpoint, commercial vehicles aren't going to detour to go through Watkinsville. Just to, just to get to the quick trip that's going to be on four forty-one. Now. If they have business going that way, we'll be there to serve them, just like we'll be there to serve every citizen of this county. But as far as creating, creating something that, that is, that's going to cause more commercial vehicle traffic in the area. It, it's just really not, not realistic and it's not how, how the sites are decided upon by QT. And it's not how this site was decided upon by QT. It is purely there to provide a, a convenient place. For people who are traveling along four forty-one or live in that. a convenient place for people who are traveling along four forty-one or live in that area to stop in, get something quick, get their gas, and be able to move on. This project's consistent with the future land development plan. And if if you wouldn't mind, would you bring up the the current zoning that we that we have for that area? I think Mr. Herring has gone over that a second ago. If you see the entire side of the road that that this project's designed for is currently AR. But also, what's not identified is there's government land over there that either belongs to the state of Georgia, federal government, that they're going to really be able to do whatever they choose to do with if they ever decide to move it, or it'll stay like it is. Now, as far as the nearest nearest neighborhood or the nearest residences, I guess you'd you'd say Summit Grove, Summit Oak, that area is is probably it. But there's there's already already buffer between us and that neighborhood, that OIP provides buffer for for them from from Macon Highway. And we're on the other side of Macon Highway. We fit the profile of what this county chose for its future land development in this area. This is civic center property. That means B two fits the profile, and that's what we're asking for, is to be able to rezone to an approved future land development zoning and move forward, move forward from there there. As far as as the distance, again, I mentioned it earlier. It's almost half a mile, y'all, from this location to the nearest neighborhood. It's between a quarter and a half a mile. So so I certainly can appreciate that 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 residents want to be protected. This is just not the type of project that's going to cause problems to to those neighborhoods. There was mention, Planning Commission, that it was going to potentially impact your recent roundabout that you have near the government complex. Again, it goes back to we're not going to create any more traffic that's already that's already there. The roundabout is going to take the same traffic whether we're there or it's something else down the road. But we're a good choice. We're the right choice. We're a great asset to this community if you approve our plan moving forward. Quick Trip generates about one point three million dollars in annual local and state taxes. On average, create twenty-four jobs. Those jobs include benefits such as profit sharing, retirement, medical, and perhaps most unique of all, Quick Trip provides support for college education of its employees. Each store has a budget every year of at least a hundred and eight thousand dollars to maintain the property. In other words, to keep it up, keep it looking like like we come to expect things in Oconee County to look. Donates five percent of its net profits from each store to charitable organizations in the community it's serving. In the end, QT wants to be here, wants to serve this community in that and that particular location, and they're a great option. I'd like to reserve my remaining time for for responding to anything I may not have considered, and I'll certainly be available to answer any questions you may have. In addition to to myself being here this evening, the project manager for Quick Trip, Charlie Tarwater, is present, and he'd be available to answer any details about about the project that that I may not be be as up to speed on. Thank you for your time.
Mr. Everhart, there was one other person that signed up to speak for. Do you want to allow some time for that, or you want to keep reserving?
I don't know that person. Is it this Tarwater?
Is Ginger Redwine? Other sign? Okay. No problem.
But if she was.
Yeah. Right. With that, we'll move to those speaking against, Julie, on your personal list.
Hello, I'm Julie Mock. I live in Watkinsville in Summit Grove, actually, right across from there. And I sent you my comments, so I'm just going to read through it to get it on public record and and I I just want to let you all know that I appreciate what you do. I really do. I don't appreciate many people, especially on boards, but you all do a great job of developing this county, and I appreciate it. I was disappointed after attending the last Planning Commission meeting that they voted to approve the rezone request for the truck stop to be built against across from the new Oconee County Administration Building after little to no questions were asked. I'm hopeful that more informed heads will prevail at the meeting this evening. Some notes, as I understand it, from the Planning Commission meeting and tonight, is that this will be a twenty-four hour truck stop. It will be open all day and all night. Quick Trip will be buying all twenty-two acres. Right now, they're only trying to rezone four to six acres for the truck stop, gas station, whatever you want to call it. But it will have truck bays, and that leaves sixteen plus acres for them to expand onto at a later date. While they'd like us to believe it's just a little old gas station, it will require twenty-four new employees to run it, according to their commentary. There will only be one entrance and exit that cars and truckers will have to share, and that will be the current entrance to that plat across four forty-one at the light. That doesn't work, by the way. You have to sit at that light forever. Just threw that in there. But my family lives in Summit Grove subdivision, which is right up the street from the new administration building. And since we moved here less than five years ago, we have seen a new church rezone approved, an office complex built, a new daycare, a new storage facility, the Oconee County Administrative Building, and a new roundabout built. All of this is within walking distance of our home, as is the truck stop. I've neither complained nor opposed any of those developments. In fact, I showed up in support of the church, and I love me some roundabouts, so you can put them wherever you want. But I'm begging you not to permit the rezone to allow a truck stop to be built there. It doesn't conform to the area. There are more residential areas than he pointed out. You could see them right there on the map that was pulled out. It doesn't conform to the area. It's unnecessary. It will invite trucking traffic to come through downtown Watkinsville, and that's the opposite direction that we need to be moving for that quaint little town. As I'm sure you remember, we not long ago had a murder at the racetrack gas station, which is just right up the street from where they want to put this gas station. That hit us hard. That struck deep to people who live with within less than a mile of the racetrack. Robbery, drugs, prostitution, homeless hangouts, pollution, and depreciation of surrounding property values have long been concerns surrounding truck stops in this country, and that's not likely to change. In fact, Realtor and Zillow both list convenience stores with gas stations as the number two industries that diminish property values. And again, I respectfully, I also sent you more information on the environmental concerns about having, you know, an additional gas station there. There was a link to it. I hope you looked at it. But again, I respectfully ask that you deny the rezoning to help preserve the property values of the homeowners in the area to preserve the environment and to keep Oconee County the lovely area that it is. I I'd like to also say that I was sitting over there counting, and there are at least five gas stations that I can count within just a couple miles of that spot. Another gas station just isn't necessary. It's just not. And if a truck stop is necessary, that's not the place for it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Marla?
Um, this is the first time I've spoken before you guys. I'm going to double down on what Julie said, and I'm, that's because I'm very impressed and we're all satisfied with the job that's been done. So bear with me. I also have a tremor at baseline, but I'm also nervous. My name is Dr. Marla Chepikoff. I live in eleven ninety Summit Circle. The entrance to my neighborhood is about a hundred yards from the proposed rezoning site. So I know he's saying a quarter of a mile to the entrance proper, but about a hundred yards to the main entrance to those two neighborhoods. I've been a physician for almost twenty years now with medical licenses in Georgia and Florida, and I'm going to get to the point of why that's relevant in a few minutes. I've lived in Athens area for about fifteen years and in Oconee County in my current home for eleven years. But I'm not from here originally. I grew up in a small town in rural West Virginia. It's extremely poor, extremely uneducated area of US, and it's very, very different from Oconee County in many ways. Since I've lived here, I've been just continually impressed by the care and effort and pride that people here put into their homes and in the community. I'm grateful to that end for the job that you guys do. I know that it's got to be difficult, and as I said, this is the first time I've ever spoken out against any project that's been here. I honestly just kind of can't sometimes believe that I live in a place like this. And I think because of the way and where I grew up, I have a different appreciated appreciation of that than many people, if not most of the people who are here tonight. Right now, the biggest debate in my neighborhood is how far to cut back the privet at the front of the neighborhood. And I know that sounds funny, but to me, like, I'm real grateful for that because nobody here is gathering tonight to figure out how to keep drug dealers off of their neighborhood street or warning their neighbors that there's yet another gunman in the area, which is what I grew up listening to my parents debate. So I'm here tonight to voice concerns that I have specifically about the impact of this proposed rezoning on crime and safety in the area. For the purposes of my comments, the term remote is going to be defined as an area outside of city limits with frequent and significant transient traffic. So for the purpose of this discussion, the area in question is considered remote. I have several concerns centered around the proposed special request for truck stop in particular. I know that Quick Trip is specifying that this is not technically its truck stop for various reasons, but they also on their sketch have indicated that there will be truck parking, so not a formal truck parking lot, but truck parking. And in the Planning Commission, what they indicated is they would be able to pull up from the truck bays into a trucking spot because that's where they would park to be able to go into the convenience store. So let's make it a point here that trucks will have a place to park for any amount of time. Also, during the planning committee meeting, the question was raised, what will prevent trucks from parking in those spots for an extended time? And the answer was, I don't see why they'd want to. But Quick Trip does not have a policy against extended or even overnight parking. And when asked who would be responsible for making sure the parks didn't park there, the answer was the store manager, and they do the best they can. So my point here is that there will be trucks parking, and there is no time limit to that truck parking. So there's not a sit-down restaurant, but they got to park somewhere to be able to go in and use the bathroom and buy whatever food is being cooked there. So remember that I said that I have two medical licenses, and to maintain those, I have to complete special training in the recognition and reporting of human trafficking. During that training, I learned that truck stops are an ideal venue for traffickers, especially in remote areas as this one is. I've pulled this article from the National Human Trafficking website. As you may know, the state of Georgia is and the city of Atlanta in particular, one of the most extensive hubs in the US for human trafficking. And according to the World Population Review, Georgia ranks seventh in human trafficking in the U.S. So that's horrifying statistics, and as a physician, I have treated people who have been rescued from human trafficking in this area. So I assure you that it does happen. It does exist here. Four forty-one is a direct route to Atlanta, and so make no mistake, if we encourage trucks to stop in this area for any amount of time, we are most definitely exposing ourselves in our community to the dangers around human trafficking. My second concern is about prostitution. Areas where trucks can stop also notoriously attract sex workers. One study revealed that the average interaction time, and that's negotiation to completion between a sex worker and a truck driver, is fifteen minutes, meaning if they can park for fifteen minutes, then they can have that exchange. These deals can be arranged via CB or text in advance of even reaching the stop. The fact that the truck bays and the parking spots are hidden from main view only makes these interactions more likely to happen. So if you have a place for trucks to stop, you will have sex workers, and I have also treated those sex workers in my practice in in here in town. My third concern is about increased drug traffic associated with this type of business. So a large study conducted in twenty nineteen, this is from the Journal of Preventative Medicine and Hygiene. This is well cited in addiction medicine. So this is from twenty nineteen, and in that study, they revealed that thirty percent of truck users use illegal drugs, most commonly marijuana, methamphetamines, and cocaine. However, according to the Federal Motor Carrier Safety Administration twenty twenty-two report, which I've also pulled, the number of truck violations is up an astounding eighteen percent in twenty twenty-two. And that has to do with the way that sample collection is done. So that's odd. So now what they have shown is that the most common drug that truck drivers are using is cocaine. The two most common places truck drivers report buying these drugs are residential homes and gas stations with truck bays. My fourth concern is the about the violent crimes and robberies associated with just convenience stores in general, minus the truck bays or with the truck bays. According to the twenty twenty-two FBI Annual Crime Report, three percent of violent crimes occur at convenience stores. That ranks fourth on the list of top ten places for all crimes reported by the FBI. Further, ten percent of robberies occur at convenience store. That ranks third on the list of top ten places for all crimes. That probability of such a crime goes up significantly when the location in of the store is remote and when the hours of operation are twenty-four hours. So in essence, we're talking about increased exposure to human trafficking, increased attraction for sex workers, increased traction for drug trafficking, and increased risk of violent crimes and robberies if a business like this is placed in this specific area. My final concern is about traffic safety. Part of the reason why there are so many trucks on this route to begin with is because they're avoiding the interstate. And the reason they're avoiding the interstate is because they're avoiding state troopers and they're avoiding weighing stations. So they are avoiding scrutiny. The reason they're avoiding scrutiny is either they're not meeting state regulations or they're carrying something illegal, the most common things being weapons, drugs, humans, and oddly exotic animals. I did also see one report about some sort of caviar, but I don't know much about that. So in conclusion, this is just, it's not a good asset to Oconee County. We don't need another gas station. We definitely don't need the increase in crimes and the impact on safety in this area. I think it would be irresponsible and dangerous to put a business like this in a residential community. The only people who are going to benefit from this store are Quick Trip and transient and potentially unregulated truck drivers, certainly not the citizens of Oconee County. And I just want to gently remind you that your job is to represent people like me and my family and my three young children, not Quick Trip and not transient truck drivers. And then I also just kind of want to leave you with the question of would you want a business like this built a hundred yards from the entrance of your neighborhood? And if the answer to that question is no, I would really hope that you would vote against this proposed rezoning and special use request. Thank you.
Thank you. Ginger Redwine?
It's not my intention at all. My name is Ginger Redwine. I'm a lifelong Athenian, but I've lived in Watkinsville for twenty-three years. I don't know who you are, but wow, I thought I did some research. I don't know who you are, but wow, I thought I did some research. Wow, everything that I just wanna reiterate everything that Julie said and what the Marla, what Marla said. I do live off of North Main Street. And one of the reasons I live off of North Main Street and back road, as I like to call it, is because it's nice and quiet. And if you think somebody's not gonna go straight at a red light, you know, I got some property, so yeah, but this is definitely not what Oconee County residents want, and I think y'all are hearing that very loud and clear. There, there's two things that that two schools of thought that I've seen being motivated here. One is money is motivating people, and one, the quality of life is motivating the residents. So I would like to speak on being motivated by the quality of life. I think Oconee County has has some of the best people I've ever met. We're passionate about our people, we're passionate about our residents, passionate about our kids, and I just would like the board to take that into consideration. Yeah. I love what you were gonna ask me. Thank y'all. And thank you, Marla, for showing all the research, cuz sex and human trafficking is real and drug trafficking, and it's all goes back to truck stops. So thank y'all for your time.
Thank you. Eric Healy?
Thank you. I'm Eric Healy. I live in Summit Grove. I don't have a lot more to add than what my neighbors have presented to you. I would say that I believe it is entirely plausible that the truck stop would not add more traffic, but it will most certainly back that traffic up at the light. And the light between the light and the new roundabout, I believe that it is impossible that that won't become a problem. Next, I don't see how a gas station for truckers that pass through the community is of any value to the community. It certainly doesn't help our immediate neighborhoods. We have a gas station just right down the street from that, and I've yet to run out of gas between my house and that gas station. Right? And nor have I seen a truck run out of gas in the area. So we simply have no immediate need for a gas station. And I think it will cause a traffic problem in that immediate area. If you will go take a look at the 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 circle, it is kind of problematic for the trucks. And I believe stopping them just outside of that is gonna back up into that circle or certainly cause us problems getting in and out of these neighborhoods. And I don't, I don't see how this benefits our community at all. And I believe it is your charge to make decisions that are for our community, not for people who are passing through our community. Outside of that, that's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Everhart, you got your rebuttal time now?
Five minutes and forty-eight seconds.
I'm just gonna touch on a couple things real quick and then then turn over the rest of my time to Mr. Tarwater, who's certainly much more knowledgeable about the specifics of what QuickTrip does to protect the people that are at QuickTrip and around QuickTrip. But it seems to me that 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 it's certainly understand that there's some people that don't wanna see this. But the real question is, does, does it meet what is proposed for for that area? Does it meet civic center criteria? Is B two appropriate in this location? And does it serve some other purpose? And and there's a lot of discussion about about traffic and things of that nature. What I would suggest to to you is to consider that while yes, there, there's no real way to say that this won't add a little bit more traffic to that light. It will do a couple things. First of all, there was a comment that there's a timing problem with that light as it is. Adding that spur will actually drive G dot to improve the timing on that light. So there'll be changes that will be made from that standpoint. But it also benefits your citizens who travel along four forty-one and anybody that's done it recently and tried to get into the gas station at Hall Mountain or try to get out of that gas station recognizes that that there is congestion there. And this helps alleviate it, helps separate it a little bit. So so there, there, there are, there are benefits, but ultimately, ultimately, does this fit the civic center profile for for four forty-one? Four forty-one is, I mean, it's it's there's, there's terminology for it, and I'm blanking on it at the moment. But I mean, it's a route that that's designed for commercial vehicles and and you're not gonna get more vehicles, but you're gonna serve the folks who are there.
Charlie Tarwater, I'm a project manager for QuickTrip. Wanted to address a few concerns here. If you all have ever been to one of our stores at night, you'll understand that the lighting we have at our site, not just at the store or at the gas canopy, but around all the surrounding areas is extremely well lit, you know, customer and employee safety is of utmost importance to us. So first priority is making sure not only customers, but employees can see anywhere and everywhere if something is going on, even off our property. We are a nationally registered safe place, meaning anyone who is in trouble can come inside the store, say they're having an issue, and they'll be taken to a back room with a clerk until they are released to the proper authorities, whether that be law enforcement, whether that be a women's shelter or even a men's shelter. So the safe place recognizes our sites to be one of the safer locations that someone can go to if they're in need or in trouble or feel like they're in danger. We also encourage law enforcement to sit on our lots. They're welcome to free coffee or free drinks anytime of the day or night. This includes paramedics, police, or fire. And you'll often see police cars parked in a corner while they're taking a quick break or getting something to eat. That also discourages any sort of activity that was mentioned earlier. Lastly, we do have a what I like to call mission control help desk back in our corporate office in Tulsa. That's about twenty to twenty-five people that are constantly monitoring cameras from around all one thousand stores that we have to see if there's any issues going on. They can also alert the authorities to that proper area. Employees carry a belt alarm so that if they see something, they don't even have to pick up the phone. They press the alarm, something's brought up on the screen, and it's diagnosed as to what needs to be called out. So our employees are trained to be vigilant, but we also give them the tools to make them vigilant with the proper authorities should they need to be called. Thank you.
Thank you.
Forgot one one comment, and I know it just, I should have just enough time. One, one of the first things that was said was that there are parking spaces for trucks, and and that's just not, not accurate. What is the reality of of the situation? Okay, so if you're, if you're behind the building, which is the upward area, that's where the truck bays are. They've got to pull through those truck bays and do a U-turn to come back out to the light. If they pull through and they stop and they park there, they're obstructing the ability of any other truck to get in and out of that location. So while technically they can park a truck there, it's not gonna be truck parking because the operation won't work if it's if that happens. So so the idea that they're just gonna park and stay it's not, not consistent with the plan. Thank you.
With that, we'll go ahead and close public comments and open up any questions from commissioners.
I've got, I'll start it off. I've got a few. This is an interesting one. But they have, whether you were, is it Charlie?
Yes.
I don't know if I can remember your last name. Has any QuickTrip store ever been closed by a local authority because of any kind of bad activity, criminal activity at that location?
Not to my knowledge, no, sir.
All across, what do you got about a thousand stores?
Just over a thousand, yes, sir.
Okay, so that covers a lot of states?
Yes, thirteen or fourteen now.
But there's been no action by a local government or state agency to shut down any store because of criminal activity being allowed to occur?
That's correct, yes, sir.
Okay, let me ask you this. How many employees do you have working at night?
I believe at a location like this, it would be up to operations, but I would assume two to three.
That'd be just about all the time.
Yes, and in the mornings and afternoons, you'd see a little bit more just cuz that's a generally busier period, and you'd probably see five to six employees.
Okay, let me ask you this one. Out of your thousand stores, and they're scattered to all across the country, how many armed robberies do y'all?
I don't have the that number off the top of my head. I'm sorry.
Okay. All right, let me ask you this. How about, how many big trucks coming in to QuickTrip to make deliveries?
You would, at a location like this for dry goods, you'd probably see one every other day, and then the gas and diesel would just be dependent on the volume, which would probably range between one every two to three days as well. And those, both of those trucks run overnight. Generally, less traffic, and it's easier to maneuver through the lot.
Okay. How about, let's talk about your lighting. Let's go a little bit more detail about cuz I know people, some of the concerns about lighting and whether it's gonna be lit up like an airport or is it more subdued light, but still the lights down toward the ground?
It will be, it will be very well lit. Obviously, nothing will spill over onto adjacent properties per ordinance, but under both canopies, it generally averages fifty-foot candles, and then the building is roughly thirty-five. I don't have the measurements for kind of perimeter areas, but those are generally the main areas that we like to keep extremely well lit, just so customers can see anywhere and everywhere.
Charlie, tell me how you feel about doing, deciding on that. Process.
Yeah, so we use state of the art LEDs, and those are, we have a designer in-house that strictly does lighting up to our standards. And so we will map out the area where the lights are located, and then if an area is shown to be a little bit darker, we will add light poles or add additional lighting to make sure the entirety of the site is well lit for customers and employees.
Mr. Horton, may I go back and address one, one of your questions? Know your law enforcement background. So so to to answer to you and maybe, maybe the rest of the commissioners, the, the security cameras that QT utilizes, and it's, it's at a level that that's over and above anything I know anywhere else, particularly with with them having a monitor off-site where where if something were to happen, God forbid, there would be an immediate response. QT's not a location that you're gonna target for illegal behavior because you're gonna get caught. You're gonna be apprehended, you're gonna be arrested, and it's gonna happen quickly because they're identified. Now, that works both ways. I can hear the wrong way. You know, it's this idea that, well, that means there is gonna be crime. Well, I mean, there, there's no way to ever say there's not gonna be crime anywhere, but you prevent it by making sure that there's unbelievable accountability if something goes wrong, something goes against design. That's not gonna happen with B two and something else being there down the road. You're not gonna have the level of security that that this particular project provides.
I had a few questions, kind of took hit on a couple of them already about the staff, and I was concerned about the tragedy that happened at the racetrack up the street. My understanding, and please, somebody they know for sure can correct me, but I was under the impression that that store clerk was alone that night. So what you're saying is y'all standard operating secret is that at all times of the day and night, there's more, at least two or more?
That I, I would assume at this location, again, operations is is in charge of staffing, but I would assume in a location like this with the truck and the and the gas, it would be two employees overnight. I would assume so, yes.
As far as your, your, you mentioned the benefits, what is a typical salary for a team, as you call them, team members?
So the the clerks, I believe, start right now. Again, this is an operations thing with, I believe, thirteen to fourteen an hour, but the store managers can make anywhere between eighty to a hundred and twenty thousand a year. Each store team member gets profit sharing for that particular store, which obviously encourages taking great care and pride in that individual store. Mr. Everhart mentioned some of the other benefits that full-time employees and even part-time employees get to experience. Speaking from personal experience, I've been with QuickTrip for over twelve years now. My, the only job I've ever known, I worked in the stores for about five years before I moved into the corporate role. This is now my third role. I'm actually getting ready to move into my fourth role with QuickTrip. So they have never given me a reason to look elsewhere. There is the scholarship reimbursement. If you work in the stores along with going to school or online college, they will pay for at least a portion of that as well. So you know, I have every reason to believe QuickTrip takes incredibly good care of their employees, and we've been ranked in the top one hundred private companies for the past ten or twelve years now.
That would maybe more answer than I needed. With the, the, you mentioned full-time and part-time, what's used in the mix?
So there would be five full-time employees at this store, so you'd have a manager, a first assistant, a second assistant, a relief assistant, and then a night assistant, and then the rest would be part-time clerks. Those clerks can take up to forty hours a week. Staffing, depending on how much they can work, we will give them the hours they want, and we will also move clerks around so they move, they work, you know, two shifts here and then two shifts down the road, so they're getting the hours that they want.
Okay. So so I take it that if somebody didn't show up work, then one of the managers would have to fill in?
That's correct. And we do have a extra relief program. So if someone calls out or just doesn't show up, we have extras floating around.
Well, my concern is, you know, not leaving the store with only one attendant.
Correct.
I think that invites, you know, concerns I have.
Yes, it, and I understand that concern, but we do have either the the manager would stay late or they'd find a replacement for that person.
One, another question. I appreciate you talking about the DOT because I was curious if y'all had even asked for additional access. From your comments, y'all did that, but they did not give you a reason why not?
They did give us a reason. We were requesting a right-in, right-out to the left of the site. It's limited access basically all the way down to the next break. One of the requirements for breaking limited access is to improve network interconnectivity. Since there is no real option here to provide that interconnectivity, they would not strike that as a requirement as much as we asked to do that, cuz we also believe that that would improve traffic circulation.
Yeah, I couldn't tell from the site plan, and maybe somebody could speak to this, but will they require a D cell, XL, I mean, acceleration lane and D cell lane?
We will operate under whatever G dot request, if that is a D cell lane or an XL lane leaving our site as well as potentially just a right pass out to get in. So we G dot is reviewing our traffic study, and we will make whatever accommodations they request.
But I was kind of curious, is, you know, trying to decipher the site plan, if there was gonna be, you know, enough width there for, you know, for people wanting to turn right or go straight or turn left. And then you have the incoming traffic.
Right. So that driveway width right there is thirty-five feet, and that's generally our standard width for a multidirectional with a right in and a left, or sorry, any direction in, and you get right out or straight or left. So you have two lanes leaving, one lane coming in, whether that's a right or a left. If G dot would like us to do an additional right in only from a D cell, we will happily comply with that.
So so you're anticipating that they will require a coming out of the property, a left turn lane dedicated?
I don't know that we're anticipating it. We're planning it. I don't know that we're anticipating it, we're planning it.
Okay.
All right. That is built into, to this drive.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Eberhart, you were, in your comments, you, you were, um, I've learned to listen to attorneys. Uh, I've had good practice, um, but you mentioned that what will be any indoor tables, what about outdoor tables?
So there are, um, one table on either side of the entrance, and that's just our standard design, um, for anyone who just wants a quick break for, um, from driving. Um, generally, we see those used by families on a road trip or, or leaving somewhere, and then there's trash cans provided right there for anything to be thrown away.
But that's the front of this.
That's correct, that's in the front of the store.
That, that's gonna be my next question, there's none on the, um, now, the, the, uh, fueling base, is there a, going to be a rear entrance to that store?
There is not, no, it will just be our entrance on either side of the store and then the front door entrance.
All right. The other question, I guess, is more of a, a, a general question I always ask, and this may, Mr. Herring can jump in, as far as the signage, uh, I know that, um, you, you have, um, slides that depict, you know, the exterior.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, what, what is, are you, I know you have to follow our sign ordinances, but what are, what's your plans for as far as signage on the, on the road?
So, well, we're currently proposing one monument sign just to the left of the, uh, of the entrance, and I um, don't know the exact height off the top of my head, but it does meet O'Conne County ordinance as far as height and square footage. Um, and then it'll just be our standard, uh, QuickTrip, uh, above the, uh, the front door.
Okay, so you're not, you're not planning, uh, you know, any um, signage on the ends of the stores or?
Well, we'll have a small, I think, ten-foot button sign, they'll be mounted to the store, um.
But they will adhere to our sign order.
That's correct, okay, yes.
Uh, as far as the, uh, the landscaping and the buffer, uh, this is something I've got, as far as the buffer between this track and the others, since the others will retain their ag designation, what will be the required buffer?
We haven't got that site plan.
Yeah.
So small, I can't.
It was, it, yeah, I just can't remember if it was forty feet or, or fifty.
I think it's, it's fifty foot.
Um, but, but it's on. It was one of the things that you wanted to show.
Yeah. On this area.
So it, it would be, there would be a buffer required between those two properties.
Okay.
Yeah.
Uh, was it, we a?
It would be a planted buffer, screening buffer, yes.
Now, it'll adhere to, as far as the front, the, the landscape plans that we require.
Absolutely.
So it will not be just wide open, I mean, there'll be a planted.
That's right, yeah, our, our standard landscape strips will be required, um, as well as vehicle use area screening.
Trees, trees and all that.
Yes.
Okay.
Sort of answer that a little bit deeper, Mr. Harden, uh, we are not asking for any type of variance.
Oh, no, I understand that.
So, um, we'll, we'll make sure that we comply with, you know, they require there.
And I, I do have, I, I understand the dilemma that you're faced, that the property owner would not sell just what you needed and that you were being you know, asked or required or considered. Uh, but I think that, um, oh, I think you understand, I'm, I'm, I don't think we have any appetite, because a normal, as you call them, a travel center or truck center, whatever you call it, how many acres is a typical?
Our larger, what we would consider a travel center is generally ten to twelve, um, and would have truck parking, it would have, um, double or even triple the, uh, fueling stations for trucks.
Okay, so Mr. Harden, you're taking it back to the home office that we're really not have an appetite for that type of.
Well, I, I understand that, and we have no plans for, for expansion.
I'm just, you know, there's no.
I do understand that, yes.
Yeah.
Mr. Harden, I will, I will reiterate what you're saying.
Okay.
That, that this is it, if you approve it, this is it for QuickTrip in this location, that there's not gonna be any expansion.
Now, uh, Mr. Herring, um, I'm sorry. Um, Mr. Herring, of the, to the property, to what I call the north side, is there any what's that, what size is that track? To, to the right of where the entrance? I'm curious is what, if there's, you know, but we're talking about, uh, you know, a lot going on at, at the intersection there with, uh, where the racetrack is. Uh, and I'm cur- curious about long-term as far as the vision of what will happen as far as the development. I mean, it's, it's prime right, I mean, it's ripe for development, right?
Uh, uh, further at the, um, intersection of, uh, Hog Mountain and four forty-one is currently zoned B two.
Right.
Um, for a, a shopping center, um, so, so it is available, um, currently.
So what we're asking for is connectivity?
Well, that, that's further up, but at this point, we're, we're providing access to the remainder of this parcel.
Okay.
Right, that, that's, this parcel is not the parcel up at, at Hog Mountain and four forty-one.
So the access we're talking about is, is to that track?
That's correct, that's correct, the, our condition would, would allow access to the remainder of this track for access to the signal, and the remainder of this track for access to the signal.
Okay. All right. Like, that's all my. Let me, well, totally, the depth down the road, DOT could even make the decision to open up even more like a left, right? They're not concrete, do they would, this would be the only access?
Certainly, that, that's, that's correct, and it should further development occur, this location and further developments occur here at those times, maybe right-in, right-outs would be appropriate, uh, to G dot. Because it would provide, as, as, as Charlie spoke to, the, the increased connectivity to those adjacent parcels.
I guess my question about the connectivity is if there's, so there's no way we can go back to G dot and talk, and because to, to me, it seems that having a right-in, right-out is gonna improve the trans, that's, with inside QuickTrip, it would improve the people going southbound regardless, because they wouldn't have to go up to the red light if they're going southbound. So there, i- if, if this were to go forward, I would like to see, is there a way we can talk about getting that right-in, right-out, because to me, it just seems to improve the, the red light activity period.
I, I do think that, um, that G dot makes their decisions.
I get you, I understand.
For the right away, and, uh, we don't have a whole lot of say in that.
Better processes for sure.
Yeah, yeah.
Definitely better process. Um, question about earlier, you were talking about your, I'm sorry, um, your.
Yeah, and, and to that point about G, I think you might have been, been getting to that point, we offered to buy it from them, um, and get it appraised on, on our behalf, and that still did not start anything for them, but, um, that being said, if we would partner with anyone in, um, trying to accomplish a break in the limited access there for that right-in, right-out.
I understand. You talked about your, uh, control center earlier.
Mm-hmm.
As far as the, um, bays and trucks, and what kind of camera work are you gonna have on the bays, like, well, you have cameras on the back of the property, uh, with all that?
Is, I understand it, yes, and there should be cameras within the canopies themselves, as well as mounted to the rear corners of the building to kind of encompass a, a hundred and eighty degrees from building back, if you will.
And the, uh, signage, as far as what kind of signs do you, where's the nearest QuickTrip that mirrors this design?
So that would be the one, what was the address that I sent you?
Uh, well, the Qula is, is similar, but it doesn't, it's not, the, the bays don't sit in the back. Um, Lexington Road doesn't have have.
Does not have diesel bays, but it will, it will mirror the same building style as well as, uh, gas canopy.
And I'm looking, this has got four, four big truck bays, just put that way, am I looking at it properly?
Three, one is only has, uh, an MPD on the, on one side, so you just see your standard diesel truck, like a, a, a four by four.
What type of signs do you have at QuickTrips for no overnight parking? I mean, I mean, because, I mean, truckers are gonna be truckers, they're gonna park where they can park.
Right, no, we understand that, and, um, if that's a concern, which it sounds like it is, we're happy to put signs kind of in between the trees, along the sides, as well as um, if you even want to, uh, or would, would entertain, uh, Xs or something like that, stripes to indicate no parking. Um, as well as our employees are instructed to notify the truckers that you are not allowed to park here, we don't offer any sort of amenities or even parking in this instance, uh, for those drivers.
Some of the concerns are, but if you only got two people working, you've got a lot going on, this is a, this is, this is a I mean, just one guy working a register and somebody walking around picking up trash, two people, it's gonna take that all night long, because you've got people going in and out, so yes, I mean, it seems to me two's kind of small number of people going to, making it operational all night long, for sure, since you said it's twenty-four hours, right?
That's correct.
Let me throw around a couple things while you're resting. What, what if in line with what Mr. Harden said, that y'all would take back what we want? Guaranteed, there's three employees in that place, but.
Uh, unfortunately, I am not in a position to.
You can take it back.
I can, I can certainly raise that concern with our operations group.
We won't, you know, for, for me, I it was a horrible tragedy, I had to work those kind of things, and I certainly want people to feel comfortable, but I don't want to see one if I approve, if I vote to approve, I don't want to see one person in there. If there's two, and one's out moving around outside, I understand that, but preferably three. Somebody's gotta go to the bathroom, somebody's gotta do this. Uh, so I, I would strongly urge you to do that, the second thing that, that I might even mention is fencing. Where, since we're only talking about that acreage, not the whole thing, so really, you don't you don't want somebody coming in that way and then coming in to the backside, so let's talk a little bit about what kind of fencing we might be able to do to keep people from the, that backside, because I think that's kind of what you were talking about. Cameras, fencing.
Yeah.
And keep undesirables from coming in that way.
We could, we could certainly do, uh, fencing along the kind of top portion of UC, of the, of the site plan. Um, just to discourage any sort of, uh, activity, like you mentioned, um, as well as, um, we will have a fence, uh, around that detention pond there as well, just for, uh, safety precaution. Um, is there a specific place in mind that you, that you were looking for it?
Well, I'd be honest with you, I'd fence as much as I possibly could, so people can't walk in.
Mm-hmm.
Because they shouldn't be out on a four-lane road walking around anyway. Uh, and so make it easy to keep folks out of it that doesn't need, that, that don't need to be there.
Yes.
That's what I'm talking about, so you're talking really about three sides.
Yeah.
As possible. But certainly coming from blind areas is, is the, the lady who was talking about, if you've got things, activity in the back that people are paying customers, you don't want other a, a rendezvous type situation occurring.
Mm-hmm, no, I, I understand, and yes, we can do the, the fencing on the, the three sides like you mentioned.
I'm talking about considerable.
We have several different options we can look at, um, that we've used in the past for different uses.
And I would ask, you know, if, if it's approved, that y'all work in this area.
We can do that.
I've got one thing left to say, but not to, y'all can sit down, it's just a, a question or statement has been made at the planning commission, and maybe tonight too, make some email. Um, to be quite honest with you, the growth that's been in that area, I think you might have to help me, John, and guy, a lot, a number of the projects that have come up, I think the the storage building, that was already zoned years ago, it had nothing. And, and guy, you may come up here and help me go back down that list about the properties where that have been zoned years ago, and they came back, and we didn't really, I don't go out and tell them to go put a storage building, uh, somebody found a property and wanted to do that.
Right, yes, sir, Commissioner, the, these were B one previously, the, the old cabinet shop here, and now the daycare. Um, this was previously zoned and as OBP for the mini warehouses which are there now. Again, there's a remainder of that for, um, uh, for assisted living facility. Um, of course, the OIP in, in this location has been here for many years, special use for the church was most recent. And this was our newest rezon, uh, the office complex, uh, at, at this location, um, that's under construction now.
So really, we're only talking about two really recent rezones of, of the properties.
Uh, other than the administration building, that's correct, yes.
And we've been working on administrative building for how many years?
Just since two thousand four.
Yes, it's good, two thousand four. I just wanted to say that, because I don't go out and, I, I think I've made one request to a person to see if he could work on a particular retailer, and we just got it back at last fall. And that took fourteen years. So that's the only one I've ever asked, I did ask that developer for the work on a second one, that I thinks it would be good for the county, but it's up to him. But I don't go out and just go ask people to put up a storage building.
Any other questions coming? And we'll entertain a motion on the rezon request P twenty-three dash zero zero nine zero.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion to approve rezon P twenty-three dash zero zero nine zero for Kelly Borwick and Ken Hill Jacobs Property LLP, rezoned from AR to B two for six point two eight five acres at seventy, seven, six oh, Macon Highway and Veterans Memorial Park. Uh, with the four conditions as presented, and also add the fifth condition of the fencing for our discussion here tonight.
Six. Yeah, and go ahead and add the six on the parking as far as no, on the Xs and no parking?
Oh, yeah, we'll add, and add, add as a sixth condition, add signage. All right, okay. Thank you.
All right, so we have a motion and a second to approve rezon request P twenty-three dash zero zero nine zero with six conditions. Four from the staff and planning commission, and the two additional for fencing and no parking designations in the truck zones. Agreed. Any discussion? Call in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries. Now we're entertaining motion for the special use P twenty-three dash zero zero eight nine.
Make a motion, we approve special use P twenty-three zero zero eight nine. Diesel truck refueling bay, six point two acres. Seven, seven, six zero, Macon Highway, Veterans Memorial Park way, under the, with the four conditions, so.
Be six conditions.
I mean, six conditions, six conditions. I didn't know that.
All right, so we have a motion and second to approve special use P twenty-three dash zero zero eight nine with six conditions, any discussion? Call in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries. Our next item is variance request P twenty-three dash zero zero eight zero, Joe Irving, placement of solar panel, solar panels in the front yard of it's nine point six one acres at one 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 seven Knob Creek Drive.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, again, this is variance P twenty-three zero zero eight zero, Joe D. Irving. Uh, this is.
All right, guy, you can go ahead.
Okay, thanks, sir. Um, this is the aerial photograph of the subject parcel, C zero three C zero zero four G. Um, this is, it's currently zoned AR in the suburban neighborhood and country-states character area. Again, the applicant is requesting hardship variance in order to install two solar panel arrays in the front yard of a double frontage property. This is the concept plan that you have in your application packet, uh, showing the, the Knob Creek Drive road frontage and the Mason Mill Road frontage, the existing structure. road frontage and the Mason Mill Road frontage, the existing structure or home, uh, facing Knob Creek. The proposed location of the, the panels, the solar panels. These are representative photos of the panel array. And again, staff, uh, recommends approval, uh, that does meet the conditions to grant the hardship with, uh, two conditions. One, our standard condition and number two, a twenty foot vegetated screening buffer should be maintained between the proposed solar panel arrays and the adjacent property lines of parcel C zero three C, zero zero five C, C zero three C zero zero scrubbing and the right of way of Mason Mill Road, uh, in order to provide year round vegetable screening between the solar panels and adjacent properties. Thank you.
Now we're here from the owner or the agent of the owner.
Good evening, folks. I'm Tyler Johnson. I live in, uh, Madison, Georgia, actually, but I'm here on behalf of Smith Planning Group, representing Mr. Jody Irving. Um, it's pretty straightforward. Just as the gentleman mentioned, he would like to install some solar panels on his property. And I see no reason why we have any problems with your guys' recommendations, really. Um, are there any questions?
No, thank you.
No?
All right, maybe later.
Okay.
You get, we may get a chance. Does anyone else wish to speak for the variance request? Anyone virtually? Anyone wish to speak against? Anyone virtually?
Yes.
Thank you. With that, we'll go and close public comments. Any questions from commissioners?
I have a couple, just a clarification, uh, just hearing, um, an unusual with, you know, lot fronting on two different roads.
Yes.
Was this at one time, two separate lots?
It was. That's correct. Yes.
So when the, um, when the application was made, did we we, the planning department goes out to put the, the rezon signs out?
Yes.
Where did we place the rezon sign in this particular?
This was a, a variance sign should have been on, on both streets, this side and this side.
Okay, so it was published. I mean, the sign was out.
Right.
Cause I, I didn't get any call. I was just curious if we had signed that, you know?
We did. Yes, sir. Yes.
Okay. Did we get any communication from any neighbors or is there any conversation with any neighbors?
I had, I had an email conversation with, um, a gentleman from the Knob Creek neighborhood. Um, and, and mainly questions, asking questions. And so we had that conversation via email. Um, we do have in your application packets, uh, two letters of, of recommendation of approval uh, from these two adjacent neighbors which are adjacent to the location of the proposed solar arrays. Thank you, Mr.
There are no other questions. We'll entertain a motion.
This chairman, I'll make a motion to approve variance P twenty-three dash zero zero eight zero, eight zero, Jody Irving. Placement of solar panels in front yard, nine point six one eight, eleven seventeen, Knob Creek, Knob Creek Drive, residential with two conditions.
Second.
You have a motion and a second to approve variance request P twenty-three dash zero zero eight zero with two conditions. In discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. Next time is variance request P twenty-three dash zero zero nine eight. Thomas and Teresa Haddock, reduced side building setback is point two nine acres at fifteen twenty Autumn Park. It's a single family residential. Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Again, this is variance P twenty-three zero zero nine eight, Thomas and Teresa Haddock. Uh, this is the aerial photograph of the subject parcel B zero one N zero two six. That's currently zoned R one and suburban neighborhood character area. And the request is for a special exception variance to reduce the side building setback from seven and a half feet to two point two feet for a golf cart enclosure. This is the, uh, concept plan shown in your package showing the, uh, the already built golf, golf shed, uh, about two point two feet from the current property line, uh, within the seven and a half foot side setback. Uh, this is a photograph of the, uh, the new structure, um, existing. Again, another picture of the same structure for the golf cart. And staff recommends that this does not meet all the necessary conditions to grant special exception variance. Uh, should the present request be approved, uh, staff would recommend these two conditions. Uh, one, our standard condition and two, vegetative buffers shall be installed between the addition to the existing resident and the property line to the northwest in order to provide vegetable screening between the structure and the adjacent property. Design and planning of such buffer must be coordinated with and approved by the adjacent property owner, given the very limited space available for planting within a reduced side yard setback. Thank you.
Now we're here from the owner or the agent of the owner. We're gonna come on up.
You just started requesting the special variance for our house. And I have something I don't think that y'all have. I know y'all have a lot, a lot of the, um, the pictures and forms and everything. But one that our, um, our surveyor who surveyed the house when, before we lived in and, and, uh, and then ser- surveyed it again. And he said he, he showed the side of the neighbor's house to give some perspective. And the shed is very nearly the same distance from the neighbor's house to the, to the side of our house. And, um, right, yes. And it was approved. We, we've been there like three years. It was approved. Um, by Oconee County and HOA. And there was the driveway. It, the shed is owned, the concrete pad of a driveway that's been there for three and a half years. And was approved. Do you have any, any questions?
We may have some questions in just a minute.
Okay.
All right. Thank you. Stephanie Davis.
I live directly to the left of the Haddocks and we have no issue with it. It's visually appealing from the street. We have free car garage on our side. I believe the neighbors on the other side of them have a four car garage. So it seems to blend in from my opinion. Thank you.
Audrey. Audrey Talbert.
Um, I live just down the street from the Haddocks and they have built a beautiful garage on their property that looks amazing from the street. So I'm kind of confused why there was a question about it in the first place.
Thank you. Larry Talbert.
Uh, but we go walking through the neighborhood, I live just in the street. That's my wife, by the way. But we go walking through the neighborhood on a regular basis and we look at all the houses because we think it's a beautiful neighborhood. Uh, they had built this on to their house. I never noticed it. It was, it was blended in. It looked just like it was part of the house originally. And that was, uh, and I didn't see any problem with it. In fact, the way I looked at it, it probably increased the value because of the fact that there was no place to park the golf, uh, golf cart. Uh, and that's a golf cart community that we live in. So I just didn't see that there was a problem, especially when I didn't even notice it until somebody told me about it and they put a variance sign out in front of the house.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak for this variance? Anyone virtually?
Yes.
Now we'll move to those speaking against. Terry Hand.
Thank you, gentlemen, for allowing me to speak. Uh, my name is Terry Hand. I'm an Oak County County resident as well as a resident of the Georgia Club. In fact, my home sits three doors down from, uh, the property, which is part of this variance application. So what happens here directly affects me. However, I believe that your response to this request has the potential to affect every homeowner in Oak County. To put it simply, I do not believe that the approval of this variance is in the best interest of myself, my neighbors, or any property owner in this county. To allow a property owner who did not apply for a county building permit, as is my understanding, did not apply for permission from the homeowners association to build such an addition as is required. Under the bylaws, they agreed to abide by when they purchased their home in the Georgia Club. And when told numerous times by written cease and desist letters sent by the HOA's legal counsel to stop construction, chose to continue to build. Only now are they applying for the variance that is required. This entire backwards process and attitude of I'll just do what I want and seek approval later is just not right. Um, if this is approved, then what keeps me from building a swimming pool in my front yard? That's where I'd love to have it. I'll just do it, not care about what my neighbors think, not abide by the bylaws of my community. And I'll just apply for a variance after I'm finished. It worked for the house three doors down. Should work great for me. That attitude works great for me, but it may negatively affect the property values of those homes around me depending, depending on how ugly my bright idea might be. And I won't be the only one who thinks a pool in my front yard or some other similar ugly plan is a great idea. There will be other homeowners in other subdivisions in this county who thought that they were buying into a planned community. And then we'll find out that their neighbor has done something that detracts from the uniformity of the community because a precedent has been set that allows them to do so. And so their property values are affected by such an attitude. That is what your decision on this application is. It is a precedent setting decision. Your decision will either strengthen the concepts of planned community, following the rules, abiding by county ordinances and HOA bylaws. Or you will tell this entire county that those things don't really matter. You can do what you want. We'll just approve it since you've spent the money doing what you want. I just know which precedent should be set and I hope that you do as well. And in closing, let me just quote from my late father, who was always good for a quotable quote. He used to say, a law without penalty is just good advice. And I believe that holds true for policies and procedures as well. A policy or procedure that has no repercussions if not followed is just good advice. And I believe that that is bad policy for my county. Thank you for your time.
Tommy Miller.
Good evening. I am, uh, Tommy Miller and I am the president of the Georgia Club Homeowners Association. And the property in question on tonight at fifteen twenty Autumn Park is a part of the Georgia Club community. Part of the process of moving into an existing home within the Georgia Club or buying a new home within the Georgia Club is the new owner must sign documents stating they understand and will abide by covenants and the bylaws as established and will abide by all rules set forth by the board of directors. In section five point two of our covenants, it clearly states the board of directors is responsible for approving any design changes to a home, including any major landscaping changes. As a matter of fact, this even cover, covers when people want to paint their houses or repaint their houses, it still needs approval by our design review committee. At the closing, all owners, including the Haddocks, signed the document that they agreed to buy, abide by these rules and policies. The Haddocks did not apply for this review to our design review committee. They just started building. We've had numerous emails, conversations and meetings with them over this, and we always run up against a brick wall. The first thing we would require when somebody applies for this is a survey. And if that survey came back and said that this structure is going to be in the setback over the other person's property, then we would decline it. And it would not be built, but that survey was not done to begin with. But if you allow, the, the problem is that we are not against people improving their homes. What we want them to do is come through our process, the design review committee, so it can be approved. And, and, and that's why we have this planned community. If, if you allow this variance and the gentleman right here is absolutely right, then the other homeowners of Oconee County will just feel like, well, we can build into the setback. We don't need approval and the Oconee County Board of Commissioners will approve it later. So for the record, we agree with the staff recommendations that this variance should not be allowed. Thank you.
William Hung.
Thank you for hearing my concerns. I'm the neighbor, adjacent property owner involving this pending various, uh, variance request. I'm more concerned now after reading the standards for the special exception variance approval. Uh, section thirteen oh three, point oh three and point oh four. Uh, and it was questionable as to what was being built as there was never a building permit visible during the time uh, of the construction of what I call add-on unit. Plus the proximity of the add-on is much closer to my property line. And if I or the next property owner would want to expand on that side, it would be uncomfortably close to anything over there, even with, uh, with my setback staying and within my setback. The add-on does not conform to the original house construction or standard set by the Georgia Club or the HOA. So it was obviously done without prior approval or the necessary approvals. And my biggest concern is the future of the property value can be negatively impacted due to the add-on appearance because it does not exactly conform to the house, original house construction, plus its closeness to the property. And lastly, the setback was established for a reason. The add-on encroachment into the setback is over seventy percent, which severely impairs the purpose and the intent of your existing planning or development code. And this alone should be enough for denial of the variance. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak against? Anyone virtually? With that, we'll go ahead and close. Well, Mr. Haddick, do you want to make a rebuttal?
What they said is true. And what happened was we, I got a builder to build. I did not, it's only existing slab. So I thought we were in our rights to build something. What, the reason it's built in that particular spot is because I had a, a garage store there. And the reason the pad had already been poured is so I could drive my golf cart down that thing and go into the back of the garage. Well, what happened was I bought a new golf cart. And this thing was longer than the other. And when I went to turn in there, I took that half of the siding there in the door of the garage. So I decided to build a sign. My problem is I did not get approval from these folks. When I found out I needed to get approval, I went over there and applied for it. And then someone called the planning commission, which I think, uh, is in this room. Uh, and wanted to know, uh, if I had a building permit. Well, the people came out and addressed me on that and I said, uh, no, I don't. And they told me where to go to get the building permit. And so I went down there and applied for it. They told me it costs a hundred and sixty-five dollars. Everything was fine until, um, we ran into the problem of, uh, of a setback. I had no idea. The builder that built it for me, he didn't know or he didn't tell me. And so we built this sign. And it's all, if you can look at the pictures of it, it's, it's like fourteen feet long. And it's built of the same structure as my house. It's identical. And it, that was done for a purpose. I didn't, I did not want to distract from the neighborhood. My problem is I didn't go to these folks My problem is I didn't go to these folks that have a real problem with, with the code. And I'll tell you another thing too. We moved into that neighborhood. We did sign these papers. But if you've ever been to a closing, you know doggone well that they present you with about fifty thousand pages. And the, and the guy will tell you, well, what's on this page? What's on this page? They don't go down to five point four or whatever it is on the codes. They don't tell you about all that stuff. So, if, if there's a problem here, I'm sorry. I, I wish I had done it the right way. But I'm still on my property and the existing slab was already there. Uh, the only problem is it's connected. First of all, it was going to be five point five feet. Uh, to, to the property, I mean, to the setback. And then when they found out that it's attached to my house, it became seven point five feet. And, uh, I'm really sorry about this thing. I, I don't want to make any problems for the neighborhood. I really don't. I'm, I'm a member of the garden club out there and we got, uh, and I work my butt off out there all the time. Making, making something that looks good for the neighborhood. But I, I, you know, I don't know what else I can do. I, I don't want to have to tear this thing down. I've got nearly twenty thousand dollars in. And, uh, it is, it's something I saw. Uh, if you can, you can look at it and see that. So y'all give me some lenience here and approve this thing. Uh, I'll get with the HOA and I'll try to work out those problems with them. Other than, uh, I made a mistake. I really did. I never even thought about the, uh, the setback and, and, uh, and I did file for the papers with the HOA. And that's, and, and the, the lady's in charge of it, uh, she'll, she'll take that. But, uh, I appreciate you. Listen, Mr. Rambling.
Thank you, sir.
We do match shrubbers, but some of the pictures, the later pictures were the thunder stuff died and that freezing heavy watch, but we have a tree in front. We have, um, swabbing, uh, and, uh, and, you know, it's, it's.
Thank you. With that, we'll go ahead and close public comment. Do we have any questions from commissioners?
When all this stuff was going on, y'all at some point in time communicated with each other? This side versus this side? Y'all never talked? You never got any kind of notice from the HOA about, don't do this? No, no letters? Did y'all ever send any letters?
Yes, we sent letters.
All right.
We sent emails. We made fun.
Wait a minute, he's talking.
Yes, we did all that.
So you were notified by the HOA that not to do this?
Right.
Excuse, excuse me. I didn't, excuse me. We need all testimony from the microphone, please.
All right. One of you from HOA come up here and, and tell me if y'all sent letters or not.
We, the HOA did send communications to the haddocks to cease and desist until we could get this straightened out. And to date, that is still not approved by the design review committee.
At what point was the letter sent with the construction?
It was after we found out about the constructions when we started communicating with them, which is probably, I would say first of the year, January, February.
Construction was completely done when you started sending the letters?
No, it was not completely done. It was partially done. It was, it was at what point? The, uh, the framing was up. But none of the finished product was there. So we did, at the Georgia club, what you got to do is you've got to initially make an application to the design review committee before you ever start. Okay. And this was not done. And then once you make the application to the, what we call the DRC, then at that point, what you, what the DRC will get there and they will look at your plans, they'll look at the survey and they will make a determination if changes need to be made to conform to the neighborhood. And we're not against people improving their homes. We just, we have a system that you have to follow, that you agree to follow. And we did notify them early on to stop this until we could get the proper approval, which was never given.
So what was his response to you? Is that I'm going to do it anyway?
Uh, not really. It's just he continued to do it.
Sir, you, you want to step up here and?
As soon as I found out about this, and be soon.
I went to, to the HOA office over there and, and I filled out all the forms for this. The project was already well established and deciding on it and everything. He's talking about framing? No, it, it's already done. My problem is I did not apply to this thing because I didn't think I had to on existing.
But you didn't get a county permit either, did you?
Oh, what?
Did you get a county permit? Did you have a building permit?
I didn't know I needed one. My builder never told me that. So I went to the, I went to the county office. And, uh, and I applied for it. And the lady over there, uh, she, everything was all right. All I had to do was pay a hundred sixty-five dollars. And I, I would have gotten a county permit for this. But when the, the barriers kept changing and I had no idea about, uh, the property line and this guy that lives next door to me, he has fourteen or fifteen.
Just chairman, yeah. He needs to address the questions and I.
No.
No additional testimony on what's going on.
You didn't get a county permit. You never got a county permit.
I never got a county permit because she told me I had to get a variance. And then we applied for the variance.
But you already had the building done.
Had most of it done, yeah. We had the windows in and everything.
That's pretty close to being done.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, can I ask you a question about the slab itself? I mean, because obviously the slab was already in the buffer. I'm not, I, you just got to scoop me on slab. Then just because it was slab already there. It's already, I mean, basically he went straight up on the slab.
On the, on the driveway?
Yeah, the slab was already there when he put the building on.
Well, it's not a building slab. It's a driveway.
I got you. I got you. Okay.
Yes. And if.
And that, just give, just give me the background. I mean, that, because it encompassed into the buffer area where, or the.
And, and we're, we're not going to permit a driveway. It doesn't have to meet the setbacks.
Got you.
It's the structure.
Let me ask. Apparently this happens, unfortunately happens from time to time where, you know, we have homeowners who depend on professionals uh, for, to, to do things according to code. Sort of like at closing, we, we depend on attorneys to tell us what we're signing. Is that right?
Sure. Well, I, I'd say two things since you, since your eyes point. The first I'd say is yes, but if you're buying property, you better read the restricted.
I'm saying that because I've, I've, I've sat through a lot of closings. The only ones I can remember is the attorney who said, this says if you don't pay, you don't stay. That's the only thing I wanted to hear, you know? Uh, that as a banker, I wanted to hear that. But, but Mr. Harry, the, 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 um, if there's a builder like that, do we have, uh, any recourse against builders who don't follow rules like this? I mean, the builder's name has not been mentioned, but do we have a do not call this?
No, we do not. No.
So we don't have any control over rogue builders who don't adhere to our rules?
That's right.
And we don't usually find out about it until after they've broken the rule. Right? I mean.
Yes, but the owner has recourse with that builder.
So, so Mr. Haddock has recourse against the builder?
Typically that.
Because he didn't do right. He didn't do his job. So it's not our responsibility. It's, it's the builder's responsibility. Is that right? I mean, that's just your, my opinion. I'm, I'm speaking. So, so when, when Mr. Haddock feels like he got a permit when he wrote a check for a hundred and sixty-five dollars, but.
No, there, there's no permit issued because he had to receive a variance before we could issue a permit.
Okay. So he, he left thinking everything was fine when he wrote that check for a hundred and sixty-five dollars.
No, he knew he had to apply for a variance. We've worked with them through this process that variance would be required. That's why we're here now. So no, they, they were well aware.
So if the permit had been applied for forehand and the setbacks would have been recognized in the site plans and stuff that would have been submitted. So that would have been avoided.
That's right. Oh, yeah. Well, we would have been here anyway because it would have been upon that seven and a half. But we would have done it before a permit was issued and before the structure was built.
Saying if the builder has done his job, we wouldn't be here tonight talking about it.
That's right.
Right. Okay.
Except for the fact that what they proposed was within that setback and a variance would have been required before a building permit could have been issued.
And that may not, the variance may or may not have been requested even that point from us. And then, so the HOA still has jurisdiction as well.
But, but we don't have any basis for upholding a, a covenant.
Correct.
That, that's not our job. That's a civil matter.
Yes. So we're dealing only with the zoning conditions that were imposed upon it.
It's not up to us to enforce covenants in a subdivision.
That's right.
Okay. All right. Thank you. I would just say, because I, let me just say, I just had to go through all this and I got my permit. And I hope I don't have to come and ask for forgiveness. But that, that's the way I look at it. If I'm the one who is employing the builder, I'm the, I'm, I got a responsibility in it. And, and so I may not like certain things, but I, that's the rule that you got to play by. You go pay your money. You wait so many weeks before one group checks you out and then you got to wait for the other. And, uh, I'll just be honest with you. I know I've got friends at the Georgia club. I would imagine anybody that lives out there know there's restrictions on a lot of things. And so you got it, you got to check it. So one of the questions was why about some of this? You just got to get a county permit. You got to go through that process. It's like I had to go through it. I'm trying to get mine through. And because I don't want to have to come up here and ask for forgiveness. So anyway, that's, that's just the way it is. Bottom line, you got to have a county permit. You got to get through them. They, they say no, then you work with them. And they say yes, you, you go get a county permit.
This is a little more difficult than I, and I, 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 I do agree with Mr. Horton that you needed to get the permit, but it's on the other side. I got to look at the other side and, you know, and obviously I'm, I'm not about, I'm not thinking about the covenants because I understand why y'all want to enforce y'all's rules. But, um, that's a difficult one. I mean, very difficult. Twenty thousand dollars spent. And I, I guess if you don't mind me, you said you live right side. You're, you're directly, you look out your window and see this building?
No.
So you don't see this building at all? You're on the other side?
Well, I'm, I'm next to the building.
So you're the yellow, yellow house?
Right.
Are you the yellow house?
Yeah.
Okay. So you, you can look at your window and see this building there. See this new structure?
I can if I stand up on our windows a height.
You know, the question. Does it impede you in any way whatsoever? I mean, as far as your cutting your grass, does it impede you at all?
Well, I don't cut home grass. We have a lawn service.
I appreciate that. I wish I did too, so I wish I did.
Any questions coming? Let's go entertain a motion for variance request P twenty-three dash zero zero nine eight.
I'm making a motion to deny variance. P twenty-three zero zero nine eight Thomas and Teresa Haddock. Reduce side building setback, one two nine acres, fifteen twenty autumn fork, single family residence.
Okay, a motion second to deny variance request P twenty-three dash zero zero nine eight. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed?
No.
Motion carries. So our next item is discuss and consider the twenty twenty-three tax mileage levy for Oconee County Government. So very excited to announce that the twenty twenty-three miller's rate based on our budgeting this year will be four point eight two four for the unincorporated areas. This is a reduction of one point one three mils. Uh, incorporated areas will be five point zero eight four, which is a reduction of exactly one mil. I want to thank the board of commissioners for developing and working, more importantly, working to implement our strategic planning that we've done over the last several years. Um, also Commissioner Thomas is out of town on a family vacation, but he did send a statement on the miller's rate. He'd like to say I'm in full support of the, another miller's rate reduction to, um, four point eight two four. Uh, staff is to be commended for their efficiency and dedication to the taxpayers of Oconee County. And thank you to the voters for supporting T-Sloss, which helped make the wave, make the way for this reduction in the miller's rate. Do we have any public comment? Anyone virtually? We'll entertain a motion.
I'm making a motion. We approve the twenty twenty-three tax noise living for Oconee County Government, maintenance and operations. So.
Our motion is second. Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Motion carries. Next item is discussion and consideration of the adoption of the park master plans. Lisa? Almost caught you, Dose.
Expecting to speak tonight, but, um, as, as I spoke two weeks ago, you all have the updated revisions for the park master plans. To include the changes that we've discussed primarily, uh, the LES site being the newest to come on board eventually. And Heritage Park having some changes to, to meet some of the wishes for the equestrian as well as our mountain bike user groups. Um, the other ones are fairly minor, uh, in terms of just updating and most of those were already existing in the previous master plan. So, um, I'm more than happy to answer any questions that you might have regarding those.
Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you.
Any public comment? Anyone virtually? Any discussion from commissioners?
I have one. I just, I don't want Lisa to get fired without being asked a question. How did we address the comment from citizen about the disc golf issue?
We are actually currently, uh, one of our staff is seeking a couple of different disc golf, uh, I don't know if you'd call them experts, but people that actually work in that field in terms of development disc golf course. And so what we're, our hopes is, is that we are going to kind of almost master plan just the disc golf at Herman C. It is a very tight course because you know that park's only thirty-seven acre. So, and it's only, it's primarily in the wooded acre. So there's not a lot of changes that we can do, but what we are, our, our goal is to initially at least try to improve a couple of the, um, tee pads, uh, and whether or not those become concrete or what in the areas that we can reach. Uh, but we actually discussed this today as part of our kind of FY twenty-four priorities is coming up with a plan to start making some improvements. Because, um, that, this golf course, I think we built that back in, I want to say it was oh five. Uh, and that was a citizen. Yeah. So it's, it's in need of, of some updates at this point anyway. Uh, we've, we've already replaced. Uh, we've, we've already replaced two of the baskets um, that needed to be replaced. So we did that in the previous, just like a month ago. Uh, so we're working on doing some minor, you know, changes within the kind of constraints that we have in that park. Um, so I don't know if we'll be able to do concrete pads in all of them, just because some of those tee pads are out in kind of areas that might be a little bit more difficult to do. Uh, but we, but it is on our, on our radar.
Okay.
Sure.
Any other question? Okay. Now we're good. Any uh, any other questions, Kristen? We'll entertain a motion.
I'm making a motion. We approve adoption of the parks master plans. So.
There were a motion and a second to approve the park master plans. Any discussion? All in favor?
Uh.
Thank you. Motion carries. Next item is discussing, so the sale of the library and the government annex buildings. Daniel, you want to walk us through?
Justin's gonna do the prices and then I'll do the, the follow-up for it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman Board. If you recall, um, we put sealed bid for the sale of, of annexed and library. Um, along with previously selling off the ward building and elections building, and these are sort of the final consolidations um, that we're able to achieve efficiencies with moving to the new administration building. So as a result of the sealed bid for the library, the um, the highest proposal was A and B holding a company LLC at one million, five hundred eighty-two thousand, one hundred fourteen dollars and ninety-one cents. And the top bid for the annex property is Darren Britt with one million, eight hundred fifty-seven thousand dollars. And I'll let Daniel discuss sort of the next part of the process, which is a lease agreement with both because we need use of the properties for some amount of time.
So we, John and I talked about this. We're going to do a little bit of a sidestep on the library building. Um, the purchaser suggested, after we talked pretty extensively about lease prices and, you know, how long we're going to be in. The suggestion was made that why don't we take some earnest money and defer the purchase of the library until we're actually out of the building? Um, I think that's kind of a wash for us. I don't think it really makes much difference. They're going to put up thirty-five thousand dollars earnest money and then we would close um, I think at the end of March. And in our conversations with Mark Campbell and, and others, that seems to be pretty realistic. And they were sure as that if we're not quite out by March, they'll work with us on, on that. But rather than leasing it back, we'll just defer this closing for a few months. Um, earnest money's hard. If they don't close on it, we get to keep the money, but I, I think they were, they were happier with the notion about not being the landlord for the library and then, and makes sense to me and I'd recommend it. Then, um, I don't want to compliment Mr. Britt for uh, staying through all of this. Very patient. Um, on Darren's, we had, we had some good negotiation and discussion. And where we settled out on this was eight thousand a month for two years. Um, with an option to extend for some three-month extensions if necessary. And um, uh, pretty straightforward lease, same one you saw for the elections building and um, and the was the ward building, yeah, or that we sold earlier.
And just for the, for the board's knowledge, um, we vacated the annex. However, uh, we do continue to have need of the same property of the facility shop and the water resources field office in the rear until we can build a permanent uh, field services office at the LAS site of future times. So that's why we still have some presence on that site that hasn't moved to the administrative building.
Any questions on these?
So will we be leasing or just retain ownership of where the water services?
No, this would be a lease, a lease. We'll sell the property and we'll lease back.
I'll talk ahead. Don't have to have specific dollars, but what did we, what was the sale of the ward building, election building? You remember? An estimate, three, four hundred thousand.
It was about seven hundred in aggregate, wasn't it?
How much was it, Darren?
I say Darren, right?
Yeah. It was three seventy? Uh, that's what I was.
Close to there normally.
It was about seven fifty in aggregate.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so this was like three, four hundred each. But my point is that, that we're returning these properties back to the tax.
That's right.
Yep.
Uh, so that kind of neutralizes what we've taken off the tax road with with the uh, building of the new admin building.
Yeah, just the raw land up there.
Yeah.
They don't want to use this right.
As low as that miller's rate is now, it don't matter what. Any other questions or comments? They will entertain a motion to approve the purchases and leasing.
I'm making a motion. We approve the sale of the library and government experience that's submitted. So.
Yeah, motion second, any discussion? All in paper? Thank you. Motion carries. Next item is discuss and consider the amendment to the county lawn care contract to include the administrative building.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman Board. Um, we, we have, we have a new site we have to take care of now. And uh, so this is an amendment to the existing housing contract for lawn care for county facilities. This is in aggregate for the administrative building, sixteen thousand, eight hundred sixty-four thousand dollars a year um, for that site. Um, I would ask the approve the contract amendment as, as well as any budget um, amendments I need to go as part of this. What will also be falling off as, as we heard is, is some of the other lawn care that is baked into the contract with the annex and um, and library facilities, but we'd need this amendment to get a housing going on the actual, they're going, but we need, they want to be paid, I'm sure. So.
Grass needs cutting now, actually. Growing good. Any questions? Any public comment? We'll entertain a motion on the lawn maintenance contract addition.
I'm making a motion to approve the addition. The amounts, that's right. Second.
We have a motion second, any discussion? All in favor?
Ah.
Thank you. Motion carries. Does any commissioner wish any item to be removed from the consent agenda? Okay, we'll entertain a motion.
I can motion approve percentage and estimate it.
So.
Motion second, all in favor?
Ah.
We do not have need of an executive session, so Commissioner Sacks.
Motion to adjourn.
We are adjourned.